Hey, everyone. It is 6:45 PM on November the 24th, 2025. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee for Lisle Community School District 202. Item two on our agenda is public comment. I see we have one. Mr. Hummel, if you'd like to come forward and take the podium. Just as a reminder, if you could keep your comments on to about three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
I'm back on my favorite topic. Tom Hummel, 824-59th Street. I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed 12-year extension on the downtown TIF. Out of all the TIFs in Lisle, both new and old, this is the TIF that has always bothered me the most, since it is basically for residential development and not economic development. There is no good reason for the school district to agree to the extension. The school district, as well as other taxing bodies, should want to get this property fully on the tax rolls as soon as possible. We are dealing with the same developer whose hands are not totally clean in the delay in redeveloping this property. They should not be rewarded with an extension. Unfortunately, we cannot reverse the prior decision of curating the TIF, but the school board has a say in opposing the extension. Just one no vote of the Joint Review Board participants would stop an extension. The developer, Flaherty and Collins, will still have until 2038 to collect any TIF proceeds under any redevelopment agreement they make with the village. I know there are carve-outs in TIF law for new students generated by developments in TIF districts, but this is insulting to longtime homeowners and residents to allow an out-of-state developer to retain their tax dollars so they can achieve their return on investment for themselves and their investors. The corporate welfare has got to stop. These residential developments need to pay their fair share, which will either provide some tax relief to existing residents or generate new revenue for the taxing bodies. As you will recall, the new Polte development down on Route 53 did not require a TIF, and that property had a few buildings that were tore down that were much bigger than anything in downtown. Again, this TIF is not in a vacuum and is no longer just the only TIF within school district 202 boundaries. You now have two other TIFs within 202 that take up a lot of the commercial quarter within the school district. This is going to have an impact to taxpayers in the future. With all due respect, I feel this board did drop the ball on the Route 53 TIF by agreeing that the Hyatt should go into that TIF. What you probably don't know is that hotel owner has amassed a nice portfolio of hotels at a discount in the last several years. Most recently, just a few weeks ago, he purchased one of Chicago's largest hotels, the Weston Michigan Avenue Chicago, for $72 million. Needless to say, he is not hurting for money. The corporate welfare needs to end at all levels of government. Oppose the downtown TIF extension. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hummel. We appreciate you coming to speak to us. Do we have any other online comments or anything else?
We do not.
All right. So the third item on the agenda are the minutes from the October 27, 2025 Finance Committee meeting. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or changes? No? All right. So we are in agreement. The minutes accurately reflect the October Finance Committee meeting? Okay. All right. On to item four, the audited fiscal year 2025 financial statements. The information can be found under the Finance Committee Packet, item four, and the Regular Board Meeting Packet under item 5A6. Mr. Wilkinson, if you would take it away, please.
Yeah, so tonight we're going to start with presenting the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2025. This is our formal annual audit of the district's financial records, as well as our year-end reporting. A brief summary of the audit is included in your packet is the information sheet. There's also all of the detailed audit reports, both our financial statements and then our annual financial report that we provide to the Illinois State Board of Education. That's all in there for you to read and reference as you desire. I just did want to highlight that the district did receive an unmodified or clean audit opinion. And at this time, I'll be, oh, he's already up on the podium. He's ready to give you guys the results. But Don Shaw, he's a principal with Lauterbach and Amen, who conducts our annual audit for the last few years. He's going to provide a high-level overview of the audit. He'll also talk a little bit about that clean opinion, and then provide a brief explanation of our financial statements, and then also the information included in this year's management letter. And so with that, I will pass things over to Don.
All right.
Don, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I first would like to thank Dave and Mary Beth and the entire team for making this yet another successful audit year. Without your help, this is not possible, so thank you. As Dave mentioned, I'm going to go through the annual financial report with you. And if you turn to, I'm going to say page number, so it's going to be the actual page at the bottom. So if you turn to page one, you'll find our Lauterbach and Amen letterhead. This is our independent audit report in which we provide a clean, unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can receive. Basically states that we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they're presented. If you flip about three or four more pages, or scroll three or four more pages, you'll run into the management discussion and analysis. This really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year, or what the numbers truly mean, this is where you want to go to find those answers. I'm next going to have you skip ahead to what would be your income statement, which is on page 21. About three quarters of the way down the page, you'll notice that the general fund, which is your main operating fund, is made up of your education, operations, and maintenance, and working cash funds, had an operating increase of about $1.4 million. This is primarily due to your expenses being below budget, as well as an increase in your interest earnings, as well as your federal grants. Included in the federal grant is the IDA preschool flow-through, which is essentially a state allocation based on enrollment and poverty that's used to help support the education of young children with disabilities. This was offset by a transfer out to your capital projects fund. So your general fund was left with a net decrease of about $1.4 million in the current year. The notes of financial statements will begin on page 23. And the notes really provide further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Then there, you're going to find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. I'm not going to go through the notes with you tonight, so I'll have you skip ahead all the way to page 73. Page 73 is the start of your budgetary information. So if you want to see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you want to go to see those comparisons. Does anyone have any questions on the financial statements? Okay, if not, we also provide a second document called the Management Letter, in which it was a super-clean audit year, as I mentioned. We only had one recommendation, which is more of an awareness, I would call it. We didn't find any issues with Lisle School District specifically, but we have seen an increase in cyber attacks in the last few years. So we just really want to bring this awareness to everyone and make sure that people are taking the IT seriously, because we have seen a lot more attacks recently. And of the one prior-year recommendation was implemented in the current year, so that will go away in next year's audit. Any questions?
Just a quick question. Did you audit any of the cybersecurity controls, or just general recommendations seen here?
So we perform walkthroughs of questions that we ask the team about the disaster recovery and those sort of things. So yes, we do perform some procedures on it. Any other questions? If not, thank you for your time. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Just to add a few things to what Don said. As far as that management letter comment, we did discuss that with IT, and you can see in the management letter what our response to that comment was. We appreciate the pointing that out to us. It's something we're well aware of, and IT is doing a great job of already doing some of those recommendations that they have, and making sure that we have the necessary protections and processes in place regarding cybersecurity. And then just the other thing, I don't have the specific numbers in front of me, but obviously, we went through the unaudited financial results back in, I think it was August now, and the audited financial results that you have today mirror that very closely. There was very minimal changes, just some accruing of grants and things like that, but overall, nothing that was significant or material to the financial results for the year. So, thank you again, Don. We appreciate it. I know you're not planning on sticking around for the levy, but thank you for--
Yeah, I got something to do, I guess.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good one.
And so I think that wraps up the audited financial statements, unless there are any additional questions.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Let's see here. We are at item five, the fiscal year 2026 School Maintenance Project Grant, which can be found at item 5A7 of the Regular Board Meeting Packet. Once again, Mr. Wilkinson.
So the School Maintenance Project Grant has realistically become an annual matching grant that the state is providing. Again, the kind of the background information is included in the packet. And the maximum award is $50,000, but it's a dollar-for-dollar matching grant. So in order to get the full $50,000, we would have to spend another $50,000. And so for this year's application, our plan is to focus first on the Lisle High School Auditorium lighting system. These lights are probably some of our most energy-intensive lights that we have in the district. In particular, we're talking about the house lighting that's kind of over the main seating area. And they use a significant amount of wattage, and we're seeing that space, which is a good thing, being used more and more often, not only by us, but also for some of the Park District activities during the summer that they have there. And so the other kind of component is, when those house lights go off, the only way for us to get to them is to rent a lift, which there's a cost incurred for doing that. And then obviously, maintenance has to rent the lift. They have to get up there. They have to swap out the light bulbs. So it's also kind of a relatively frequent and challenging maintenance lift as well, no pun intended. And so, you know, updating those lights would significantly reduce our energy usage, and then also improve, hopefully, reliability, so they don't have to be replaced as often. Not completely sure what that's going to cost. I think I estimated around $100,000, so it potentially could use up that entire grant award. But if it doesn't, we did include within the project application a similar project over at the junior high, which would be to replace primarily the lighting and then the associated ceiling tile, which would be part of that project. First, we'd focus on the other half of the commons. We did one half of that this past summer as part of our HVAC project. We had to take down the ceiling and the lights, so we went ahead and replaced those and made those new. And so we would focus on the other half, if there's any funds remaining. And then, in the unlikely situation where there's still funds after that, we would then start going down the corridors to use some of that grant funding to start replacing lighting and ceiling tiles in the corridors. I did get that question about, you know, will there be enough money to cover all of the remaining ceiling tile and lights over to junior high? There certainly won't. I think the bids for that, which we're hoping that if we kind of do it over time, we can do it less expensively. The bids came in at almost $260,000 just for all the corridor lighting and ceiling tile to junior high. So even if that full $50,000 is awarded, I'm guessing most of that will be used up at the high school auditorium, and then whatever's left, we would use to finish out the ceiling and the lights in the commons of the junior high. So that's what we're recommending for the application, assuming the board approves it at the board meeting this evening. I will then submit the application to the ROE, and it will ultimately go to the state, and hopefully I'll have good news in a month or two, when I can report back to you that we were awarded that funding.
Dave, is the cost of the light, the lighting in the auditorium significantly higher? I mean, I guess the electricity that's used, or whatever, the wattage, is that significantly higher than what's being used across the junior high?
As far as across the entire junior high, I don't know if I can answer that, but the lights themselves, I'd have to have Jeff here to give you the specifics, but they are many hundreds, if not thousands, of wattage light bulbs that are used in those house lighting. So on a per bulb basis, definitely much more energy is used with those auditorium lights than you would see in the hallways at the junior high. Absolutely.
So it's a cost factor as well?
Yes.
Savings factor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I also mentioned the having to get to them to replace them. Obviously, in the hallways, you can just get up on a ladder. We have to rent a $1,000 lift to get to any of them at the high school. So if we can put in LED, and they'll last a lot longer, and they won't burn out every year, that's a big win.
For the junior high, it's just the spotlights that would be replaced, correct?
No, I'm not talking about anything in the auditorium of the junior high.
Just the ceiling.
It would be the ceiling itself in the commons, and then also in the corridors. Yeah, the auditorium at the junior high isn't used frequently enough where that would be necessary at this time.
We'd be targeting that work for like summer of 2026, then?
Well, so I don't have a specific target at this point. We're going to try and do the bid in-house and purchase the supplies through the bid and potentially get a vendor. We're hoping not to have to use the architects or the engineers, which will obviously increase the cost of that project. So we're going to have to work through it in-house. I'll work with Jim Stelmacher. He has a lot of great insights. He's the auditorium manager over at the high school. And then also with Jeff, and we're going to try and put that together. So I don't know if we'll tackle that in the spring here, in the summer, or maybe into the next fall, but we have up to two years to spend it. So it's really just a matter of finding the time to do the legwork to get that all put together and out on the street. So again, we're trying to do it in-house to save some money. We're also going to explore if there's any comm ed, energy incentive rebates. So there's some pieces that have to come together before we can move forward with it. If you said, hey, yeah, pay the architects $20,000 to do it, we could have it done a lot quicker. But to try and do it in-house will take a little bit more time.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you very much for the summary. Let's see here. Last up is item six, the tentative 2025 Real Estate Tax Levy, which can be found at item six of the Finance Committee Packet, and in the Regular Board Meeting Packet under item 5A5. Mr. Wilkinson?
Yeah, so the final item tonight is the tentative 2025 Real Estate Tax Levy. Hopefully, we can get through it here in the next 25 minutes or so. I do have a fair amount of talking points, but this presentation is available by, there's a kind of a hyperlink there at the bottom of your information sheet in the finance packet. If you want to follow along with the presentation, it's obviously up here as well. And then there also is a detailed report that hopefully you had a chance to look at over the course of the weekend, that kind of gets into the nitty-gritty, some of the calculations for the 2025 tax Before we get into the details of the levy, I did want to start with kind of a quick overview of some of the main points for tonight. You know, each levy, or each year the levy sets the amount of property taxes, property tax revenue the district is legally allowed to receive for the upcoming year. And obviously, we're a tax-cap district under the property tax limitation laws, and so our tax base really grows in two ways. It grows by whatever CPI is on our existing property, and then also through any new construction that is added to the tax rolls. And so as we're kind of talking tonight, those two factors will really kind of drive the focus of the presentation. And so with that in mind, some of the big takeaways here to remember, if you don't listen to anything else along the way, is that, again, the tax levy continues to be the district's primary source of revenue. It really is the backbone of our operating budget. And so making, you know, this process is really essential to the district being able to maintain financial stability and fund its operations. Secondly, in talking with the Lisle Township Assessor, the home values in Lisle are projected to increase about 8.5% this year. You know, it is important to note that while the assessments can certainly rise eight and a half percent, because of PTEL, we are limited in terms of how much the district can actually increase the levy. The third thing up there is that, you know, as far as existing homeowners, because of those CPI limits, they would expect to see a roughly 2.9% increase on their tax bill from the school district portion, assuming that we move forward with the levy that's being suggested this evening. And then finally, or I guess the second-to-last item there is that with new construction and what's projected, we would expect to see about an additional $97,000 in tax revenue from those new properties coming onto the tax rolls. At this point, the Lisle Township Assessor is estimating about $2.2 million in new property, and so that would generate this just under $100,000 of additional tax revenues. And then finally, kind of when you piece all that together, the CPI on our existing property, our new construction, and then also the debt service levy, which we'll touch on a little bit later, the total extension for the district would increase from last year by about $1 million. So that's the additional dollars that we would have to fund any increases in our collective bargaining agreements, any increases in our insurance, any increases in our contracted service contracts. So that's kind of the pool of money that we're looking at that would be additionally in our operating budget, and in this case, it would be for fiscal year '27. So those are kind of the highlights of what's behind the levy. From this point, we'll kind of get into more of the nitty-gritty, some of the details. I always like to remind the committee kind of what we're doing tonight. Tonight, we're just being asked to approve the tentative tax levy, which is kind of the first step in the annual levy process. State law requires that the district establish this estimated tax request at least 20 days before the final levy is adopted, and tonight's action will satisfy that requirement. I also just wanted to note, the levy that is being proposed does not exceed 105% of the previous year's levy, so this will not trigger any of the truth-in-taxation requirements, which would require a public notice in the newspaper, and then also a public hearing. So those do not apply to this year's tax levy. Again, just kind of looking at what the overall levy calendar looks like, approving the tentative levy tonight allows us to keep on track with the statutory calendar that's shown here. Final levy will be presented for adoption at our next meeting on December 16, and then that will subsequently be filed with the county before the year-end deadline on the last Tuesday in December. Taking a little bit of a step back, I've mentioned this already. I think many of you are very familiar with this slide. You've seen it a number of years, but always want to remind everyone on how Lisle 202 is funded. Obviously, you can see from the chart there that about 80% of our revenue comes from property taxes, so that really is the primary driver of what allows us to maintain our day-to-day operations. As you can see from the chart, state funding and federal funding kind of combined is only about 10%. And those percentages really don't change that much from one year, from year to year. So even as costs rise, things get more expensive, realistically, those amounts stay the same. And so ultimately, what that means is local property taxes is what is necessary to kind of support our ongoing programs, staffing services, things like that. So when we discuss the levy each year, we're really talking about, you know, it's the primary mechanism that funds our school district. As far as who pays those property taxes, you can see that roughly 2/3 of our tax base is made up of residential taxpayers, and then the other third is our commercial and industrial taxpayers. You know, obviously, that's an important balance to note, because any commercial and industrial property that we have, we get tax revenue from those properties, but we don't get the corresponding students into our system. So over time, that mix helps to offset some of the rising costs of education, and provides a little bit more of a broader base for supporting and funding our school district. Obviously, those proportions can shift from year to year. We are starting to see a little bit more of a shift from commercial and industrial to residential. I know Mr. Helderly often tracks that with some spreadsheets that he has at his house. But, you know, again, any commercial and industrial base that we have does help the district in terms of its long-term financial picture and prospects. Each year, when we discuss the levy, we always touch on the three what we've termed are key indicators of financial strength for the school district. The first one is maintaining a balanced budget, and we're on track to do that again for the year we're currently in, for fiscal year 2026. I think if we've seen on the projection for fiscal year 2027, it gets a little bit tighter, but I think that once we finish this year and really focus on what that budget's going to look like for fiscal year '27, I think we'll be able to get another balanced budget for fiscal year '27. What we're really kind of keeping our eye on is fiscal year '28 and beyond. That's where it gets a little bit more challenging. And so obviously, in the coming months, we're going to have to dig into those costs and see where we can potentially make some adjustments to make sure that we maintain that balanced budget even into fiscal year 2028 and beyond. The second indicator is maintaining sufficient fund balances. We have our fund balance policy there, which talks about three to six months of expenditures in reserve. As we've looked at the five-year projection, we are still able to continue to meet that requirement. We still have at least three months in reserves over the course of the projection, and so those reserves always help us kind of navigate any unexpected changes, anything that might be happening to the economy, enrollment fluctuations, challenges with state funding. And so that's the second important piece of kind of the key financial indicators for us. The last one is committing resources for our long-term facility needs. In previous years, we've been fortunate to be able to save about $750,000 out of our, I would call it, our operating budget each year to set aside for not only current, but also future capital projects. And so we did make a relatively large transfer of about $3 million, kind of in advance, to help pay for some of our renovations at the junior high school. But in terms of kind of this budget and the next few budgets that we're looking at, we've kind of paused that $750,000 in savings. And so at least in the short term, we're looking at using those funds for our operational needs to make sure we have that balanced budget. But we do need to make sure that at some point, we get back to some kind of savings for our capital projects, so we don't run into a situation where we have projects that we need to do, and we don't have any money for those. On the good news side is we do know that in 2030, we will be debt-free. That's when our bonds are set to expire. And so that will give us an opportunity to issue some new bonds, to raise some capital for not only additional projects at the junior high, but depending kind of on what needs might arise, or when those might arise, we may use some of those funds for needs at some of the other buildings as well. So we could do all of that without-- that without obviously increasing our taxes because we'll have the existing debt that's rolling off. I think I saw a hand raised over there. Yes?
How much is the bond? How much of the bonds are being retired in 2030? Is it the whole, like 18 million? I can't remember. Was it the issuance for the elementary or is it beyond that?
Yeah, so this is just the bonds that were issued for building the elementary school. I think right now, you could look in your audit report if you wanted to. I think the balance right now is at about $7 million. So that wasn't what they were originally issued at. I can't remember exactly if it was 13, 14 million, somewhere in that range. But they've been getting paid down since we issued those, and they will continue, that $7 million will continue to be paid off until 2030, and then we will have no debt outstanding at all. And that's when we could reissue '12, '13, '14. It depends on what interest rates are at, and still maintain that $1.5 million debt service that we have every year. Does that? Okay. So again, all together, you know, all three of those indicators help us ensure that whatever levy we put forward in a given year, we can make sure that that supports not only our short-term needs but also the long-term needs of the district. There's kind of quite a few items on here. I kind of joked with Jason, who's not here. It just seems like a negative slide, I'll be honest. But like, these are some of the factors that realistically are facing school districts right now. I think we've had some opportunities to have some very good years with COVID and the shutdown and some of the funding from the government. But there are some kind of factors on the horizon. I know we look at these every year, but there's quite a few that are realistically outside of the school district's control. And so I did want to touch on those because I think these are important to keep in mind as we talk about what this levy should look like, not only for this year but also some of the future years. Again, property taxes, we've talked about it. That's our most stable revenue source. But even then, it's obviously limited to CPI. So inflation can be above CPI, costs can be going above CPI, but we're still limited to how much additional revenue we can actually bring into the school district. We've talked a lot about interest rates at previous meetings. They've been very helpful for the past couple of years. They've generated a lot of additional revenue, but we're now starting to see those interest rates go down. And so with that, it'll reduce some of that cushion that we have moving forward. CPPRT, corporate personal property replacement tax revenues, the biggest mystery in school district revenues. You never know what you're going to get every year. We saw some really good spikes in fiscal year '22, and then that was followed by some pretty sharp declines. So it's always an unpredictable revenue starts. It's hard to be confident and really believe in what's coming. So that's always something that's out there. State funding, obviously through the evidence-based funding formula, a school district like Lisle has really seen no new money from the evidence-based funding formula. It's gone to all of the maybe less property wealthy districts that are not as adequately funded by local sources. And then also, we've talked a little bit about some of the mandated categoricals. They're staying pretty flat, but our costs are going up. So we end up, as our costs go up, those get more prorated and we actually get less from them. Or not less, but they don't offset as much of our costs, even as our costs are going up. On the federal side, our ESTR funds have expired. We got the last batch of those in fiscal year '25. And I'm sure you've heard on the news, there's a lot of uncertainty about what's going to happen with federal revenues. We don't have any answers. We don't know. But there's always talk about if those federal programs will continue or not. And then, of course, we've got inflation, labor costs, ongoing competition to get qualified staff, benefits, salaries, contracted services, all of those things kind of factor into the overall mix. And so, again, maintaining adequate reserves and levying appropriately are all important things to help provide some stability when things like this are on the economic Now, what you all came for, the nitty-gritty components of the levy, and I'm running out of time. But this is just a high level. It shows the three components. I've already touched on that. We have CPI growth, new property growth, and the debt service extension. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through these next few slides. Apparently, there's some animations on this one. Oh, where did my slide go? Hmm. Not sure why that's not showing up. But hopefully, you can see it on the presentation in front of you. This is showing our trends in CPI. The 2025 levy is associated with the CPI of 2.9%, which is in that little circled box there that's blank on the screen. I have no idea why this is blank. And then you can also see kind of some history of CPI on this slide over the past 10 years. You can see that the long-term average right now is right around 3%. So where we're at today is very much in line with those historical trends. You will notice on the bars that, again, are not up there. I have no idea why. From 2015 through 2020, we saw some very low inflationary years, and then that was followed by some very high inflation years in '21 and '22, both of which, while they go above 5% on the chart, we were actually capped in terms of how much revenue we could bring to that 5% PTEL cap. So we started to settle back a little bit more towards typical levels. And so the 2.9% is what's going to drive our levy for our existing property owners. And so that's what's on this slide, which fortunately has everything on it. Yippee. And so you can see with that 2.9% CPI increase, our levy goes from last year at about $36.2 million up to $37.2. So that's that $1 million increase, which is really, which is exclusively from our existing homeowners. Let's see here. In terms of our new construction, this shows you our new property over the last 10 years, as well as the estimate that comes directly from the Lisle Township Treasurer of 2.2 million for this current year. He provides us with a projected value of new homes and commercial projects that are coming on the tax roll. He is phenomenal. He's a brilliant guy. He does an excellent job. And so we're really appreciative of his estimates that he gives us every year. I did have a board member ask whether any of the existing TIF districts in the village affect this number. And the answer to that is no. Any new construction estimate is the actual taxable value that would appear on our assessment rolls for 2025. And so any current TIFs, they don't reduce this. They don't increase this. They're not associated at all with the new construction number that we get from the Township Treasurer. You can also see from the chart that, you know, 2.2 million is right around our 10-year average of 2.8 million. Obviously, if you look further to the left in some of the older years, you have some really good years, things like the Mark-on-Maine development there in 2019 and 2020. And so if you look kind of over the past 10 years, we've had some really healthy new construction within Lisle, which has helped provide additional revenue sources for the school district. In terms of what that, again, I don't know why these aren't showing up. In terms of how that new property impacts our construction, I'm sorry, impacts our tax levy, that $2.2 million, as I mentioned previously, would generate just under $100,000 of additional tax revenue to the district. And so when you combine all of that, it ends up being a 3.2% increase for our tax levy from the prior year. We do go out to the county and request a slightly higher amount. It'll actually be, end up being about 3.4%. That will be the levy request, not the actual extension. The extension will actually fall more towards 3.2%. But we do that because right now, we don't, while we have an estimate of what new construction is at 2.2 million, we don't know the final number. That doesn't get finalized until I think it is March or something like that at the county level. And so we always build in a little bit of a cushion to make sure that if that number changes, we have enough additional in our levy request to make sure that none of that doesn't get captured. Touch a little bit on this in terms of kind of the bond obligations that we have. This is often referred to as our debt service levy. This doesn't fluctuate based on CPI or new construction. This is something that is scheduled when we actually issue the bonds. And so it's automatically collected by the DuPage County Treasurer as part of our levy, unless the board takes any action to possibly abate that. We have, in the past, certain years, abated that. I think kind of from a three-year period, 2018 to 2020, the board decided to provide some tax relief to the residents. And so we ended up abating, I think it was close to $2 million during that time period. But absence in the abatement, the county clerk goes ahead and levies that 1.5 million so we can pay the bonds that are outstanding. And then this is just an overall summary. It just compares last year's levy to this year's levy. And the important piece of information from this chart, which I've, from this slide, which I've touched on previously, is that our total increase for our 2025 levy, which would be collected in our fiscal year '27 budget, would be an increase of just under $1.1 million. As far as, you know, what that means for an individual homeowner here in Lisle, we use a home value of $400,000 for our example. That's pretty close to the average home value in Lisle. And for 2024, that home's taxes were around $6,000. Looking ahead to 2025, as I mentioned previously, that home value would increase, expected to increase about eight and a half percent. And so that increase kind of offset by the decrease in rate. The rate will go down on the final levy. The estimated taxes would be just under $6,300, which would be an increase of $190 on the average home of $400,000. And then lastly, we always just want to kind of get some context for what the tax rate for Lisle 202 is relative to our neighbors. This is actually the property tax rates for our 2024 levy. So the levy that we've already, that we're collecting, that we collected this past year, it's not for 2025, which is what is being proved tonight. But you can see that the green bars represent the unit districts. And then for the combined elementary and high school districts, you have the elementary districts in blue, and then I think the high school districts are in reddish, brown? You tell me. And so you can see that Lisle's 202's current rate of $4.86 per $100 of value is below the average rate of $4.94. And so kind of viewed alongside our peers, you know, it's, Lisle's tax rate is reasonable within the broader landscape of our peers. And so I did get, you know, before I opened it up for questions, if there's any more, I know we're kind of short on time here, I did get one question regarding our transportation levy. A board member asked why the levy is increasing only slightly. The levy request that's in the report is going from about $2.4 million to, I believe, it is $2.7 million. And so, you know, we have talked about our rising transportation costs. And while they're still rising based on our contracts, we're not seeing the increases that we saw, you know, kind of going back to '21, '22, '23, where those really were some really sharp increases coming out of COVID, where those costs really spiked. And so we have increased our levy since then to accommodate those increases. And we're hoping that it's, you know, barring any major influxes in special ed or homeless or anything like that, we're hoping that it's a little bit more of a stable, steady increase. And so kind of looking at what our budget, where things landed for fiscal year '25, what our budget is for fiscal year '26, and kind of a 4% increase based on our special ed transportation contract and then our regular transportation contract, which both were either bid out or extended, I looked at what those numbers would be and only had to increase the levy to 2.7 million to kind of accommodate that estimated budget for fiscal year '27. If costs happen to go up more than that, we do have, I think the miller ratio report is in there. You can see that we're at just over a year's worth of expenses and fund balances in the transportation fund. So we have enough room if there happens to be a spike and we didn't levy enough. For a while there, we were actually, that fund, the transportation fund was getting really high. So then we lowered the levy, and then all of a sudden, the cost went through, because we, you know, we didn't have a lot of costs during COVID. And so all of a sudden, the fund balances spiked. And then all of a sudden, the cost went through the roof. So the fund balances went way down. And so hopefully, we're kind of getting to more of a steady, around one years of expenses in reserves and the levy actually, in addition to the state revenues that we get, kind of match what our actual expenditures are. And so with that, I'm happy to, very quickly, in one minute, answer any additional questions. Or if no further questions are needed, the recommendation is to approve the tentative levy at the regular board meeting.
Dave, maybe we can, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Pam.
Go ahead. Maybe we can do this if there's not enough time, if we had a future meeting. But I understand the TIFs, the potential TIFs won't impact the new construction, the 2.2. But at what point will they impact?
Well, that's a difficult question to answer. I know we'll be talking more about the TIFs at a future meeting once we have more information from the board. I think realistically, if there is new development inside of those TIFs, I think the challenge for the district is we don't see any of those additional revenues from that development until after the TIF expires. So we're not going to lose any revenue at this point. I mean, obviously, the value of the TIF is locked in. It's just if there's any new development within those TIF, we don't see those dollars until the TIF actually expires. So if you have areas that aren't blighted, but they do get development, those are the kinds of things that hurt the school district because had they not been in the TIF, we would have seen those revenues earlier as opposed to later.
It is. I just, I kind of was left with the answer during the presentation that it didn't impact. So I just wanted to elaborate that it will in the future, just not the 2.2 million in new construction.
Correct. Yes.
In the report. Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, on this slide 17 on your levy presentation, I know you said we're below average, which we are, but there are some outliers on that average, and we're ahead of median. And in that middle pack, we've, we've increased, right? We have not always been the highest of the Naperville schools and Wheaton 200. Now, we're the highest of that middle pack. And I had, I could go back and reference a couple of years ago. I didn't do that over the weekend. But I do feel like we weren't at the top previously.
No, that's accurate. As far as the unit districts, usually, we're right around where Naperville is. I don't know the specifics of why Naperville's rate is different than Lisle's at this point. But previously, Indian Prairie was always on the left-hand side. And then usually, Lisle or Naperville was kind of on either side of one another, kind of in that middle.
It's a tricky number because you've got the denominators, the R, value of all our homes, you know, so we're much smaller than everybody else. So they get a bigger denominator, you know, and obviously, their numerator is much larger too, but proportionally. So it's kind of, I always looked at tax rate as kind of an odd, it's kind of like cost per pupil. We only have 1,600 as a denominator, whereas Naperville, 16,000, 204, 26,000. So it's something that's, it's interesting comparison, but the numbers that go into it, it's pretty different. You know, apples and oranges with other, Naperville's so much larger than us total property EAV.
The numbers are pretty tight also. If you were to compare Lisle 202 with 46 versus Indian Prairie 42 on an annual basis, that's about $50 different on a $400,000 home. So if you have a $400,000 home, your property taxes will be $50 more in Lisle than Indian Prairie.
Yeah. But if you look at Naperville home prices, the same home is, let's say, $100,000 more than this exact same home in Lisle. So who's paying more taxes for the exact same home? You know, so it's, I think it's a more complex discussion than comparing these numbers.
Yeah. And it, again, it's all a matter of relative in terms of your size home, the price of your home. But all things being equal, $400,000 home pays about $50 more per year here. And so that could be important to some, but I just want to make it clear that it's a difference of $50 per year.
But Dan, on that logic, we've now pulled really far ahead of 201. And we are, 201 is the closest thing to us, right? Same-sized district, similar socioeconomic background. And we've just, we're just keeping, pulling farther ahead of 201 than where we were in the past.
Not sure I would say it's the same-size district. I think it's actually a very different educational experience to go to Naperville versus Lisle. I think.
No, 201, Westmont.
Oh, Westmont. I'm sorry. Okay. I thought you said Naperville.
No, no.
I was like.
No, I agree. Naperville's much larger.
Okay, yes.
I think if you look at the commercial property in Westmont, that's always been, I think, a factor, if I recall right, in that, in their EAV assessment.
Correct. I think there is a large commercial component. I've never dug into it specifically. We'd have to kind of look at that to be sure. But I know that they have a strong commercial base over there, yes. base over there, yes.
They're still making Beanie Babies or not?
So is there any further questions or comments on this? No? All right, excellent. Thank you for that summary. I appreciate all your work you've done on this, Mr. Wilkinson. All right, so moving on, agenda topics for future Finance Committee meetings. Does anyone want to enter a new topic, or enter a topic for a future meeting?
Next month, we'll talk a little bit more about the TIF that Mr. Hummel had mentioned earlier. There was a meeting last week where the Village of Lyle talked about possibly extending the downtown TIF, but there was a lot of information that was requested to get from the consultants, and so I don't even know if they had an engagement letter with their consultants yet. So as we get more information from the village through the consultants to know whether even extending it would generate enough money to actually do the project and what it might impact might be on the school district, so we'll hopefully be able to include that in our December meeting.
All right, anyone else have a comment or an agenda topic? Excellent, great. So with no other agenda items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, so the Finance Committee meeting is adjourned at 7:35. Thank you very much, everyone, for this slightly overlong meeting. Good day.